First Virginia City Council for March the 7th, 2019. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got another budget work session tonight before we get started.
Sure, Council do have David Barrett here tonight. He's with the Appalachian Independence Center and he's here to make a short presentation in regards to an outside agency funding request. He's not able to be here on the normal night, which will be this coming Tuesday. So we allowed him to come in tonight.
Mr. Barrett.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appreciate, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Eads and the staff. They offered me this opportunity and it worked out just great so I can attend both my scheduled events. And for you all that don't know me, I'm the executive director of Appalachian Independence Center. From an earlier career, I was 34-year tenured at the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, where I worked with many city officials and city staff. Sally Morgan and I go way, way back, many years on your planning staff. We worked together in Marion. The Center for Independent Living is located in Abingdon, Virginia. That's our headquarters office. We serve all of the Planning District 3 regions, including Bristol and the adjoining six counties and then the city of Galax. So our region is very large and we have the very good relationship with the State Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services. And that's where our bulk of our funding comes from, is there. We work with people within, with significant disabilities. Most of those are seniors by and far, they make up 55% to 60% of our population. Our other population are from youth to all other ages. We are targeted with the mission to help people make goals, obtain success at reaching goals. We work with individuals to make them part of the community and make them have the knowledge and the fortitude to be part of the community and make, make a commitment to our communities. We work out of what's a very unique kind of agency creation, which is Center for Independent Living. It is very well-defined in the legislation that funds it. It requires that a center for independent living work with consumers of significant, with significant disabilities, that they be able to plan and make their goals, to succeed or fail, but to be involved in being an advocate, being able to obtain the services that are available to them and to make their community a more open and inclusive place to live. That starts with our intake and our outreach staff. It includes our boards of directors. Our boards of directors are by legislation are required to represent persons with disabilities or have a personal disability themselves. At least 51% of them must be of that population. Our core services are advocacy, pure counseling, independent living skills training, transitions. And there are two kinds of transitions. There's youth transition. We work with young people who will be leaving high school and going into the community at a job or going into the community as a college student. And we, we hopefully will capture some persons with disabilities who will come through our agency and work with our counselors and we can help them over some hurdles and barriers that they may face. Then we work with adults who are in a rehab institution or in a nursing home, who are going to transition or want to transition back home to get from that place to their home. And we will help them with making accommodations, making their home accessible, improving their ability to live safe at home. The final core service is information referral, and that is pretty much maybe the backbone of a center for independent living as it is with most human service agencies. Information referrals where we get all kinds of people sent to us and we send people to other agencies for help and service. We are affiliated with the Virginia Housing Development Authority. We have a exclusive, if you might say, where they have some grant programs. They have two specific grant programs right now that we work with them on. One is the RUAM acronym, ROM, and it is the Rental Unit Accessibility Modification Grant. This is for rental units where people who rent need accessible, accessibility improvements at a location and they can get a grant through VHDA to do that. We have an exclusive, we write that grant application, they send it to us, we administer it, and then we perform the construction with a contractor. The other program that we affiliate with them on is their granting freedom program. Their granting freedom program is a program targeted for service-connected veterans with a service-connected disability. Those two programs I described, each will give $6,000, up to $6,000 to make a home accessible. Then we also work with the VA, which has several good funding programs that will help make modifications to a veteran's home who has a disability. And we have actually, we have a veteran on staff that has a disability and he, he works closely with those populations. Another program we offer is our, our technical assistance programs. And we have many of those, but our, probably our most often used is the program of accessibility surveys. By that, it is a survey, we do a canvas of a building or a complex or whatever type of facility it is. We can record and document barriers, accessibility issues, make recommendations very specifically to what will be able to correct that issue. And we do that in many, many places. We're doing it all over our district. We have done your local, some local agencies. We've done your employment offices on Bob Marshon Boulevard. We've done the Bristol Birthplace of Country Music Museum. We've worked with Mrs. Lindberg in the voter polling places and worked with schools. We work with all the agencies that are in Bristol from A to Z because it is a very busy place. You've got seniors, you've got all other collaborations that we have to work with. We represent AIC on all different kinds of committees that do planning for fairs, events, and so on and so forth. So we're very busy in doing all of those things. I wanted to let you know that we have, in addition to that array of services that I've been talking about, we have other programs that we call our, it's our outreach and our community education and it's our face-to-face things we do at events and fairs. We work with those. We set up booths, tables, we bring people in. To let you know more specifically about our services in Bristol, we, we have multiple projects that we're working with the VHDA on in the Rental Assistance Accessibility Program and the Veterans Granting Freedom Program right here in Bristol. Those are the, those are going, helping people's accessibility at their homes that your CDBG program don't, you know, don't have a way to work with that. So we work that way. We work with, we've worked with a couple of people this year where we helped them complete their CDBG application and turn it into the city so that they could get accessibility modifications in their homes. We work with, on an average, of 16 individual consumers in Bristol with significant disabilities annually. That is a group of people that get our core services, all of our array of core services are on those people. We have files set up on those 16 people. And that would range from, you know, all kinds of services. To let you know, that's the kind of thing we do. We get the bulk of our funding, as I said, from the Department of Rehabilitative Services in Richmond. And another part comes from the Governor's Independent Living Council that has small grants that we get. The other ways we get money is ask our localities to participate with us, make a matching donation for us. We do fees for services. We don't have a lot of that, but we do it. We raise money where we ask for donations from people at large every year and, and we get donations that way. We need to make up about $20,000 to $30,000 right now to fill our budget. And I am visiting all of our localities, asking them, would they be gracious enough to help us? We have been helpful, helped by Washington County, town of Abingdon, city of Galax, Bland County, and I'm going to get hopefully a few more to buy into our program and do some matching that way. If you have the ability to help us, it would be great. And if you have something that you know of, you would like us to work on. We work, we work really hard to try to have a consumer group in Bristol, but they wax and wane. And we have three and four people that'll meet on a monthly basis in the library and then next month, somebody moved and had, we no longer have a good group and that waxes and wanes, but we keep trying to do that. If you'd like us to do something in Bristol, we will be glad to do it. We will target any type of help that you might like us to try to help you with. We're there to do these kind of things and we'll gladly offer that to you as our community outreach and services. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take your questions now. I appreciate your time and...
Okay, questions?
Just for the record, what are you, how much are you seeking?
I've asked the city for $3,000 and it's a small amount, but it would be quite helpful to us.
I have one question and a comment. I think years ago, you used to have a small office over on Piedmont, if I'm correct. Do you still have that here in the city?
No. We closed the office. We have, we actually have a staff person that lives in Bristol, but on the Tennessee side. And we have very close contact to the Bristol community through my, our employee, Anna Bryant, is who I'm talking about, who lives right just across the street here in Bristol, Tennessee.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you still had that physical office. I had thought you had closed it.
We did have it and we did, we didn't. Before I started working with AIC, I don't know why Greg did that, but Greg Morell closed it.
I mean, and then really my comment is, I appreciate the work you've done and in past capacities, work with your predecessor, Mr. Morell. And, and I know that the organization does a lot of good in the community. And I think I had mentioned when, when we got this to the city manager that you might want to also look into the Community Development Block Grant Funds. While we'll take this in consideration, I think that might be another way for us to maybe possibly provide some funding to you because I think that's a really good fit with what those funds are intended for and what your mission is. So that might be a way for us to try to help you.
We're studying the application for this year now and would try to come up with something that will fit.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, to work with the city staff, I guess, and try to find something because to me, that seems like a really good fit. You know, while funds are always tight, there are some funds there that we get that we have to do for different uses and I think this would definitely be a good use.
Yes, I agree, it would. We need to find that horseshoe that fits.
Thank you for coming out. It sounds like y'all are doing a whole lot of good work and I do have one question. I know you said that there are 16 people in Bristol that are regularly involved in the programs. Is that right?
Yeah, our caseload over the past four or five years has been 16 on average. And that would be 16 every year, not the same people.
Right.
Over...
How many, how many people in the whole District 3 area that you work with? How many people are involved in the programs?
I just, they had been looking over all those reports that we do annual reports where we report on all kinds of data. Our caseload last year for the, what we call the CSR's, those are the people that receive the full core of services from us. We did 168 individual consumers and that is primarily four people that counsel and work with 168 all across our district.
Thank you. That's impressive.
The only thing I wanted to say is thank you for coming. I think you do your mission statement and what you went through is a very, very good statement. It's something the community needs. I appreciate all that you guys are doing in that arena. There's not probably enough of those organizations out there that kind of helps in that way. But there are, but there probably are some things that you could talk city manager about, probably help the city. I think we've had several citizens come in here, just so you know, this comment about the, the schools not being properly accessible for, you know, ADA compliance. And I know it, it's good to have another set of eyes to kind of look at that. If you can do a survey and tell us, you've done a lot of construction modifications probably, so you got a feel for what a bathroom would cost and what doorways would cost. Maybe you could help get the city manager a look at what seems reasonable to do each of the schools. That would help us out. And, and if there are grants out there that you know of, that you come across that would help us do the public buildings, not just the schools, but any of them that you know of, that we might go together and apply for to get funding to solve some of those problems. I think that would be a good win-win for everybody.
Exactly. That would be great.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
And thank you all for letting me be here tonight and fix my schedule. Good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Tonight is our second budget workshop for the city of Bristol, Virginia as we move through the budget season. Tonight's workshop is going to be a discussion on salary and benefits, department requests, capital plan review. And I just want to remind everybody that the budget process is a fluid process. What you see tonight are just department requests. It doesn't necessarily mean that these items will be in the budget. We will be, we have 147 revenue accounts. All those revenues are not in at this point, so we will have to adjust this as we go throughout the process over the next four to six, eight weeks. But I want to give you a 36,000-foot view of some of the department requests and some of the things that I will be asking for as well. Once again, I want to remind everybody the budget workshop purpose, aid city management in developing the budget. And that's really, goes hand in hand with item number two, is provide council as a whole with the opportunity to set clear directives of items to be funded. So these workshops are always good for myself and Tamara because we kind of understand what council's looking for and where you want to see the city go. The budget's a working document and we'll plan on presenting that on March 26th. However, if something comes up between now and then and we cannot meet that deadline, we would respectfully ask that we maybe delay that for another week or two. And then finally, a budget workshop is to keep you apprised of significant items that have come up during the budget development process. As we continue to go through this year's budget, last week, we discussed council budget goals and I just want to reiterate what those are. It's to maintain the reserve funds, a structurally balanced budget, gel and X renovations, maintain the unassigned fund balance, adequate funding for the CVB, investments in employees, self-sustaining solid waste disposal fund, full staffing for police and fire, provide support to the school system, economic development, financial tools to make sure the economic development now has the tools necessary in order to do their job effectively, top-line revenue growth and long-term reserve funds and establishing those funds and funding those funds. Let's discuss the debt service plan. This is an update from last meeting. I think the mayor would, had the incremental change that he'd like to add, so you all have all this detail in front of you. I just couldn't get it all on one slide. You can see that the incremental change, starting in '22, '23 is $205,287. The following year, $779,933. And then in '24, '25, we are net positive of roughly $2,400. As we break that down, here is the general fund, the incremental increase. The general fund's big increase is when it come in '23, '24, $825,096. And then in '24, '25, will be a net positive of roughly $195,000. The solid waste disposal fund you'll see in '22, '23 is an increase of $459,000. '23, '24, it is net positive of $607,000. And then in '24, '25, it's $483,000 is an incremental change that we have to find in our budget for that solid waste disposal fund. We'll go ahead and discuss employee staffing requests and I've put the...
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Sure.
How did the, go back to that, so how did the, what caused the solid waste to flip by a million dollars from that one year to the next?
It's just the way the bonds are structured and when they get paid.
Is that when those ones are falling off? Is that what it is?
Like some fall off and then they'll pick back up and it has to do with their principal and interest as well.
Okay. All right, that's all.
We'll discuss employee staffing. These are the departments that have requested a change in their staffing. The Commissioner of Revenue has asked for an increase of one person in their office. The Treasurer has increased, asked for an increase of half a person, which would mainly be taking a current part-time person now to a full-time position. Information Technology, and I will, I'll take the heat for this one. Mr. Belcher did not ask for that one person. I feel like that they need an additional person in IT in order to serve 400 workstations or maybe close to 500 workstations within the city right now. Drug Court, we lost a person and that's simply because the funding in Drug Court expired this past year. You will see that there's a huge increase, I won't say a huge increase, but it's a four-and-a-half person request from the Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program. What I want council to remember is last year, we did not fund any of those positions. They were not in, they weren't in the budget at that time. So this, we're having to make up for it this year. And of course, we have Allison Arnold, who is in charge of that. There are already two case managers and they would like to have another case manager and a potentially a part-time case manager as well. The Police Department, the chief is requesting that the major position be restored. The Fire Department is requesting four individuals for, to get them up to better staffing levels. We are continually, the financial, the finance team has seen every, I guess at every meeting probably since October, that overtime has been an issue in the Fire Department. As we continually crunch those numbers, there is a sweet spot for the number of employees that they would have, which would drastically reduce our overtime. The Fire Chief and I have been working on that. Last night at 10:29 PM, he had sent me an email with an updated spreadsheet of how we can continue to address that overtime issue. Streets and Engineering, you can see that there is a half a person increase, but that is simply because there is an administrative assistant now that will be shared between Streets and Engineering and IT. And those, we anticipate that that will be paid for through the maintenance fees that we receive from the state, which would be a neutral to the city's budget. The city transit system, this past October, November, and December, we had significant difficulty in finding an individual who could just work on an as-needed basis for our transit department. We had, I believe, two individuals out at the same time on FMLA and then I believe another person quit. So we had a significant amount of overtime during those months. It would be beneficial and what we have found, individuals that have a CDL, they either have, especially with CDL with a passenger rating, they probably already have a job and they're not looking just to work whenever someone calls them. We have found a lot of people who are willing to work part-time if they knew they were going to get 20 or 25 hours a week, but not necessarily someone just willing to work whenever we needed. And I, to Mr. Dietrich's credit, he tried every staffing agency probably within 25 miles to come up with someone. We tried, I tried people that I knew that had CDL, passenger ratings, and it was just virtually impossible to find anyone to work on an as-needed basis. Any questions about staffing requests?
I got a couple. One, this sheet that we had up here is different than that number, so I was trying to reconcile. You got 14.63 on this spreadsheet and that says 12.625 is the count.
The problem, the sheet you have is the one that we printed previously. It's under the Police Department. If you take away two, you see three on the Police Department. That should be one and that's the only change.
Okay, so it's the Police Department, yeah. And what's the dollar, what's the dollar amount roughly associated with that 12.6?
At this time, we don't have that dollar amount. You can, it would be, it'd be hard to put that dollar amount into terms right now at this point. And just remember, all because they're asking for it doesn't mean that that's going to be in my recommended budget. These are just numbers that we're looking at. This is department request. We will see how our revenues shake out and compare that with our expenses and then make those determinations. Ms. Braddle and I will begin working on that piece of the budget on Monday and Tuesday and really start narrowing down what, what we can fund and what we can't fund.
So does the department have to give you some justification behind all the adds?
They have given us ju, they have given us justification for all these requests.
So you want to touch on those just a little bit, on the ones that are increases?
Well, the Commissioner of Revenue, she is requesting it simply based on the volume of work that they have and that's the same with the city treasurer. IT, it's the same thing. It's just the volume of work that is required in order to keep 400 computers running and all of our servers. And that includes dealing with the Sheriff's Department's computers. There's a lot of, lot of moving pieces in IT that keeps this city running. The Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program, to me, that's relatively self-explanatory when you have adults that you're supervising, one person can't do it, two people can't do it. And when they're supervising and trying to rehabilitate these individuals and teach them classes and get them to make sure they're going to work, it, it's a more of a hands-on approach. So four and a half people is what they need. The Police Department, David wasn't here. The, there's been some... The, there's been some. I will say that there's been some issues within the police department in, that requires discipline, it requires internal affairs investigations. And those issues, it requires someone in the, to oversee that. It appears that in years past, that the major oversaw all the I A investigations, and it has seemed to bog down the police department by not having that major position. The fire department, once again, that number four, there's a sweet spot number, and I will go ahead and tell you now, it's somewhere between two and four as to what that sweet spot is in regards to reducing that overtime and actually, at least on paper, having us at a net positive when it comes to overtime for the fire department. Right now, I think the fire department's at roughly 120,000 in overtime, I believe, somewhere in that range. And if you annualize that out, you're probably looking close to $175,000, $180,000 this year in overtime. One, oh, it annualized to 120, I'm sorry, annualized to 120,000. And so they're actually a little bit better off than what I thought they were. And as I said, that number there will get you a, there's a sweet spot between two and four for what that proper staffing level should be in order to prevent overtime for the fire department.
So that's what that four add is trying to get rid of the overtime?
Right.
Can I ask, I mean, for the fire department, you're showing 44, but they're, they're not fully staffed today, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, there's really, you know, and, and I'll just say this now, with, I know the police and the fire, in the past, we budgeted for positions that haven't been filled. I think, you know, if we're going to budget for positions, and it, and it gets back to this overtime on both, but particularly the fire department, you know, you're, yes, you'll get some salary savings by not filling that, but you're also going to bump up your overtime because you, you don't have the people, personnel there to fill those positions. So like you say, I know there's a sweet spot somewhere, but at very least, even adding the positions, we ought to fill what's currently vacant. I mean, if we're going to budget for a position, I think we ought to fill it. That's, that's my personal fault and has been for a while, so.
Do we know how many positions are budgeted for but not filled? Like, since we're talking about the fire department already?
Within the city or the fire department?
Uh, maybe with fire department since we're.
Two, if I'm not mistaken, right now is, is left vacant. And they are interviewing at this point, and it's banally at my discretion, simply because it's overtime. It's gotten to a point where we've got to do something.
And, and I know with the police, the last, is it the last year or the year before, the police chief came and, and I mean, that, there were some issues about that, about the, the positions existed on paper, but to leave them, but so is.
Right.
Is there a similar situation with?
Not as bad in the police department. I think there's only one position right now that's unfilled at the police department. Now, there are people that are out on F M L A or things like that, but as far as a vacant, true vacant position, it's only one, I believe, at the police department.
And then my question too, with the addition of now having an ambulance and the E M S services, you know, I would think that would require some additional personnel, but also some offsetting revenues.
And you're right.
And I don't know, you know, we're not probably there yet in looking at all that, but.
And there, and that's, that's a piece to the overtime issue right now, is the fact that, you know, there has to be in it two people on that ambulance at one time, and also we are using an individual who is qualified to do the medical coding that comes in, reviews all, and who is a firefighter. So on her days off, she comes in, and it takes, I think roughly six hours a week, I believe is what they've said, to review all the reports, make sure they're submitted correctly. Because if they're not submitted correctly, they get kicked back, and they've done really well as far as not having those items kicked back to them.
So we're effectively at 42 firefighters currently?
Yes.
And so they want, they want to be at 48?
That's what they would like to be.
When will we get the numbers on how much we're getting back from the ambulance service?
I have up-to-date numbers as we speak. Through, into February, I think we're at 39, either 39,000 or 49,000. It took us a while to get our Medicaid number. We got our Medicaid number mid-January, and we have roughly, we had a meeting with the billing department. I think we have roughly $70,000 outstanding from Medicaid that we're just waiting. We'll get that check relatively soon. Once we get that check, you're looking year-to-date, if we got that check today, we'd be at roughly 120, $130,000 in revenue for the ambulance. We budgeted 150,000. So if that check comes in soon, there's no reason we cannot meet that budgeted, budgeted goal.
Do you anticipate any big holdup?
I don't anticipate, it just took a while. I mean, it's bureaucracy to get that Medicaid number. And as I said, I was really getting concerned. We didn't have that Medicaid number in October. We stayed on top of that. We continually pushed not only the billing department who helped with the Medicaid number, but the agencies that hand out that Medicaid number. It just takes time, but we did receive that. It was either second or third week of January, we received that Medicaid number.
Well, certainly, we need to fully staff the fire department, and honestly, we don't need them doing as much overtime because I don't know if it was you that said it or maybe it was Bill, but if anybody in the city needs to not be overworked and underpaid and is just cranky, it's firefighters, you know, because they're going to put our fire out at our house if it catches on fire. So I need them well-rested and happy when they're coming into work, so.
I think you, we all kind of touched on it about, you know, if we're wanting to add positions, that increases the budget, but also if there is, you know, some other things like additional revenue from the ambulance and savings and overtime, how, I'll be excited as we kind of go through the process to see how it sort of, well, we're adding this, but you know, getting this over here to kind of.
Mr. Forn and Mr. Osborne, you all weren't here last spring. After that budget presentation, Ms. Braddlin and I met with every council member. We did it two-on-twos or sometimes one-on-one, depending on schedule. We went line by line through each budgeted item. That way, we could address any concerns and make any adjustments that we could see that might be forthcoming in the budget. And we will start doing that, that, probably that last week of March or first week of April as well. And that way, we can show you exactly what it's costing the city. Any other questions?
The environment control, is that?
I'm sorry.
Was that the C B, or part of that was funded by C D B G?
That's, that half portion will be. That's correct. That'll be a, there'll be a revenue to offset that, that will be paid for through C D B G funding.
And, and the transit as well, I guess it, or does that have?
Transit is not, does not, well, I should, there is a portion of it that would be offset because it increases our federal funding. It, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it will be offset by roughly $8,000, which will be a cost to the city of about $15,000 to have someone part-time. I may have those numbers reversed.
And again, I know when you get to the full presentation, you all show the, the offsetting income and stuff. So, you know, again, with the fire, I think you might have some of that now that they're doing the, the E M S runs, you know, recovered costs from that might, would, would factor into that, so.
So if, according to this, if every department head got what they wanted, the, the size of the city staff would be increasing by 12.625?
Correct.
Roughly, do you know, over the past three years or five years, has the city staff been shrinking or?
I've actually got a large spreadsheet I had last year. I went back over the past 10 years to show city staffing. I'll have to get that pulled back up, but city staff has shrank over the past 10 years on average. And I shouldn't say that you'll see 12 new employees here. What you would see, you would see a new employee in the city transit. Environmental control is already covered, and that's the only reason you're seeing that half-person increase there is simply because of the C B, C D B G funding. Streets and engineering, that person already works here at the city. That was an internal move in order to help facilitate streets and engineering and I T on the administrative side of it. We discussed this with Mr. Wingard sometime back in December, I believe, and we just felt like that was exactly what needed to happen. Of course, at the fire department, that would be four new employees. The police department would be a new employee. The judicial alternative, that would not be any new employees. If I'm not mistaken, they have four people within that department right now, so there would be a half a person increase. I T would be a new person, and the city treasurer and the commissioner of revenue would be a new person.
And so explain, explain to me again what happened with, with this paper that we got? Where it says three for the police department?
That was a, that was a, it was more or less a typo, is the best way to say it.
The commissioner of revenue and the treasurer's office, since those are constitutional offices, is there any comp board funding that might offset that?
Not that I'm aware of for these positions, but.
Not for the treasurer's office. The commissioner of revenue, right now, they're, they're covering those hours with contract employ, with a contracted services. There is a piece that, for the commissioner that would be covered by the comp board, but not the entire salary or the benefits.
Well, I know the benefits aren't, that, that's always our responsibility, but, you know, they tell you how many positions they'll find. I didn't know if the, some of that might, and they might have changed that as well. I don't know when the state reevaluates those, how often, so.
Comp board funds, we'll, we'll fund a piece of that position.
I have one more question, just so I'm clear. The, the other big number up there, the alternative sentencing program where it's zeros all the way across, that's a relatively new program.
That program started back in August.
Okay.
It went into our budget July 1 of 18, and it actually began accepting people into the program August, September.
So that's why it's always been zeros, but did you say there's already people that are?
Yes, there's people already that were budgeted for. The, the positions were not technically budgeted for last year. It was, it was within the budget, but this is just showing that now you will have budgeted positions within that department. Okay. Employee salary and benefit information. Gentlemen, it's not very often I get to give good news to council, but one piece of good news that has happened for us, we learned within the past couple of weeks that our insurance premiums are not increasing this year. This is the first time in Ms. Braddlin's short career working in local government that she has never seen an insurance rate increase, so we're very lucky that that has not happened this year. What you see here is a 3% salary increase for all employees within the city of Bristol. And so it's basically a total increase of $400,000 for the general fund employees for increases. That includes the 3% increase plus your increases in workers' comp that we anticipate as well and everything else associated with that.
So that's what, you're, you're anticipating what you'll present to us, 3% increase?
Barring any unforeseen circumstance with their revenues, I'm planning on asking city council for a 3% increase for our employees. I will say that we have gone back, we've done a spreadsheet. I've randomly pulled, I believe, five employees, and several of those five employees are making less now than what they were five years ago, and some are only making 20, 30, and $60 more than what they were five years ago.
I don't, trying to think, I don't think we've had, been able to give, other than the one-time bonus last year, any increase since I've been on council. So I know it's been quite a while, and so if you, if you think it's, you can make the numbers work, I would say they, they're more than deserving of it, that they've waited that long and, and not got just a base increase as well as probably had from year to year, their, their portion of the insurance increase, which means they're actually, as you say, taking less money home. So I appreciate what the employees have done over the years, and I think this will help keep good employees and maybe even help attract some for some of those positions. So I think it's, again, it's been one of those things we haven't been in a position to do. If we're in a position to do it, I definitely think we should.
Let me, I'll just run all, over to the solid waste disposal fund. You can see here that there would be roughly a $50,000 increase in salary and benefits for solid waste disposal fund employees by the 3% increase as well. Overall, you're looking at roughly a $450,000 increase for salaries and benefits for that 3% raise for all employees.
One note that I had, the first thought that comes to my mind when we talk about the health insurance premiums not going up is, it just makes me think, well, then next year, it'll probably be going up even more, or ever the year after that and the year after that. So just something to kind of keep on the, in the back of our minds that if it's not happening this year, it, those generally 10 health insurance companies, your rates normally don't go down for that, so.
Any thoughts, questions?
Well, while I'm thinking about it, I mentioned, I thought about mentioning our last work session, and I let it slip in my mind. I would like copies of all of your slides.
Okay.
That way, you know, I can look at them and reflect.
Sure.
So back to our last work session, I'd like a copy of those and, and all of these also.
Not a problem.
Yeah, just send, I don't mind electronic, I don't want a hard copy, but like when you, you made those changes, you know, to the goals?
Right.
Somehow make a note, like, make a different color, something like, like a change from the previous slides.
It shows revised, well, I thought.
Says revised, but you got all the.
I was thinking that was, okay, I thought the first one said council.
A lot of those bullets are, were in the original one, right?
Sure.
Yeah. That way, it's easy to pick out the changes.
Sure. And next, we'll go into department requests for this upcoming year. These department requests are only department requests that are over $10,000 and that I consider significant department request. Once again, it does not mean that every department request, regardless if it's greater than $10,000 or if it's between zero and $10,000, will get into this year's budget. We continually have to develop that and see. I just feel like it's important that council is aware of what departments are asking for and what they need in order to do their job effectively. The treasurer, you will see a $17,000 increase in D M V stop fees, but there's an offsetting revenue. So it's really a, it's a wash for the city at that, that amount. Finance, professional services, that is, has to do with the IRS arbitrage rebate that has never been done in the city that's in regards to our bond paperwork. So this is a correction for a piece of that. There's also, if you all remember, Ms. Braddlin took the initiative to develop a dashboard so that each city department has up-to-date information in regards to what they have spent on a daily basis. And that, part of that $10,000 will go to continually keep that dashboard up to date. It's a great tool. It appears that everyone else is, everyone is enjoying that dashboard service. Next is I T, printing and office, office supplies. This would, 22,000 implements a citywide printing tracking. That way, everything will, what we're trying to do is get everything that's I T-related to run through the I T department so that we can track it consistently. In years past, everything I T has been, within each department, was hard to consolidate and figure out exactly what was being expensed for certain, certain issues. The following increase is $149,801. This piece here is for citywide technology rotation. We have computers in this city that are probably eight and 10 years old that people are still using. The biggest piece of this is roughly $80,000, which is part of our mobile data terminals for the police department. This past, this current budget year, we put $80,000 in the budget for that, and then we have another $80,000 coming up this year to replace all those mobile data terminals. So that's the biggest piece of this $149,000. There is an opportunity that the police department may get a grant that would be able to pay for those mobile data terminals, and if that's the case, and if I can make it work, I would like to leave that 149 in the budget in order for us to continually update our I T equipment on a regular basis. You will see a new line item, software for public safety of $29,000 this year. This consolidates, we pull the public safety software into one line item. That way, we know exactly what we're spending for police and fire, software data updates and software updates. The electoral board, you will see, this is simply because a $12,000 increase, there's four elections in this upcoming fiscal year for the electoral board. It happens every four years that they need an increase. I believe the last time it happened, they didn't have the funds available and they had to do some budget transfers in order to cover the expenses. And when you have four elections in one fiscal year, your increases go up due to the number of electoral, electoral, electoral officers you have to have working for those elections. Uh, let's see, whoops, sorry. Judicial alternative sentencing program, that's professional services. This was last, fiscal year 19 was for only three quarters only, and this, so this year will be the first full year because we were able to use some drug court money last year to cover that first year. So that $27,000 covers that fourth quarter that was missed. Operating supplies is $21,000. The fiscal year 19 grant has ended, but however, there is a potential state. Operating Supplies is $21,000. The fiscal year, um, 19 grant has ended, but however, there is a potential state offset that we're waiting to see if we have. And then there's also an increase of $63,000 for work release fees. However, there's an offsetting revenue increase as well, which would help offset that $63,000, and it should be a net neutral for the city. Communications for the Fire Department, that is, um, adding e-Dispatch to our system. I don't know the intricacies of how e-Dispatch works, but from everything that I've been told and seen, it's a process that allows everyone to communicate all at once, police, fire, uh, and life-saving crew, all to communicate at one time. Then, Education and Training, $13,000 increase. That is for a conference, which, due to expanding job roles, that she feels that it's necessary that more individuals attend these conferences and get educated about their job roles so they can do those jobs effectively. As we continue on with the Fire Department, we have medical supplies, $21,000. That's an increase than what you have seen in the previous years simply because it's, uh, we have the ambulance that's now running, so we have more medical supplies that we're using. Operating Supplies is a $10,000 increase is for EMS equipment and software fees. Contract Labor at the Jail, that's for your part-time deputies and physicians, $25,000 increase in their line item. Professional Services, Inmate Medical, $65,000. That's based on the actual cost of what we're running this year. I think last year, or this current year's budget, we budgeted $65,000, and if I'm not mistaken, we're over $100,000 at this point for inmate medical care. We don't have a choice. If an inmate goes to the doctor, we have to pay that bill. The Maintenance of Building and Properties, a $410,000 increase over last year's budget. As you remember, last year, we were talking about the Jail Alternative Sentencing Program. We were talking about trying to, uh, bring the Annex up to DOC standards. The months of July, September, and, uh, July, August, and September, uh, we did have an engineer look at that Annex, and they made a determination that would cost somewhere between $350,000 and a half a million dollars in order to get the Annex into, um, DOC, within DOC standards. There's an RFP outstanding right now, so that we can actually narrow those costs down even more. We feel like the $410,000 will cover that, and once again, we'll have to just make a determination whether or not it's worth trying to bring 40 inmates from other facilities back within the city if that cost will, um, pay for itself. Based on the current numbers, I think that cost would pay for itself within 18 to 24 months. Operating Supplies and Materials for the Sheriff's Department, that's the Holiday Packs. This is where inmates' families can send holiday packs to inmates', uh, or family in the jail. However, there's an offsetting revenue for that as well. Let's see, where am I? Uh, the Line of Duty VRS payment, that is, it's $27,000. That's the cost of that. Uh, we, you know, there's really not too much that we can do. That's something we have to pay. Streets and Engineering, $10,000 for maintenance of building. This is additional, basically it's set aside for additional paving of non-eligible items. We do have streets here within the city that you do not receive VDOT funding for, so we do have to pave those streets every now and then, and that would cover some of that. $10,000 for operating supplies and materials. That is to add some GIS and engineering software that needs to be updated. And then $23,000 for equipment is for plow and spreader. However, there's VDOT funds to cover that. And then in vehicular equipment, it's replacing, I believe, is that the mower, the 10,000? I think it's the mower. There's VDOT funds that would cover that as well. Let me see, did I skip? Seems like a, looks like I've skipped one when I, there's a $10,000, uh, for fleet maintenance that's not on here. Uh, this must have skipped when I copied and pasted. And that's for diagnostic equipment replacement for our vehicles. Maintenance of, uh, Buildings, $25,000. Uh, we would like to increase this to $50,000 with unexpended funds carried over. This simply goes to, we have to take care of our current buildings to make sure that we're doing the necessary maintenance so that they don't get, get in such a state of disrepair that we cannot continue to use them. We want to set this aside on a year-to-year basis and continue to roll it over and build up that fund so that when something does happen within the city, uh, for our buildings, we can take care of that. The Virginia Highlands Community College, they have asked for an increase of $29,797 from last year's, uh, budgeted, uh, item. I think last year we gave them 33,000, 34,000, and so they're asking this year for roughly $62,000. Then, the agency request is for, let's see, 20, 50, my lines are crossing. $53,973, that's for the Public Library, and they came in this year. In the past, I know last year they came in, they said, "We know the city's in, uh, financial straits. We're not going to ask for an increase." This year they came in, they said they need an increase. We will continue to look at that. What I would remind council is, once you increase the Public Library Fund, you can no longer decrease it in years' future. So we have to be cognizant of that fact. If you do decrease it, you have to decrease the rest of the city budget by that same amount.
A quick question about the library.
Sure.
Um, the library gets funding from both, both the Virginia side and the Tennessee side.
Right.
The library actually sits in Virginia, so how does that work as far as like, snow plowing? Um, you do, do our guys, since they're on the Virginia side, we, it's just a cost that we have then?
Right. Economic Development, Hotel Bristol, you'll see a line item now for $130,000. That's based on the incentive, uh, package that they received when, several years ago, when they came to the city asking for incentives. Uh, the Euclid Avenue Center, $32,500, that's based on what we anticipate those incentives to be paid. Uh, Tourism and Promotion, Discover Bristol, they are now asking for a $125,000 increase from what we funded them last year, so from 50 up to 175. Believe in Bristol is asking for 40,000 this year. We funded them 20 last year. And then the Bristol Country Music Association is asking for $125,000 in funding. They were not funded last year. Once again, our capital plan, I know this was a topic of discussion at the last meeting, and the capital plan is something that we have to invest in. Uh, based on Ms. Bradlin's training and conferences that she's been to over the past year, it appears that healthy localities roughly use 3% of their budget to set aside for capital, uh, in their capital plan. They believe that's a healthy number. As you can see, in 1819, we had a local capital of $301,000. In 1920, due to some lease roll-offs and other items that have come off, we have roughly $625,000 that we will be able to use for capital, capital needs. I will say that the Police Department is, uh, probably number one on my list in regards to the capital needs that they need based on their vehicles. We do have a rotation plan in place, uh, that will allow as the city to purchase 12 vehicles per year, and we can use the, as the leases roll off, we can use pieces of that money and other revenues to cover that 12 vehicles per year so that our vehicles are, uh, usable and safe and they're not beyond their max useful life. In 2020, you can just continually see how we're building this up. So in '23, '24, that's when we meet the 3% goal, and it's a budget increase of roughly $200,000 from the previous year. As we discussed, uh, at the last meeting, we had projects that we had to take care of this year. We went through, we ranked everything. There was a committee of about seven of us that reviewed all the projects. We looked at it, what was the purpose of it? Did it further the city goal? Did it help with public safety? Uh, just a variety of nine or 10 criteria that we scored each project on. And you can see that there's federal, state, and local funding, and how much that's going to cost. Lee Highway will cost the city roughly $26,700. The Bonham Road Shared Use Path is about $12,600. King Mill Pike Curve Reconstruction, that is right there near North Star Baptist Church. We have, it's probably, if not the most, uh, I think it's the second most, uh, dangerous place within the city, especially when it rains. I think number one intersection's there at Clear Creek and Highway 11, and Bonham Road at Exit 7. At this intersection, that road gradient, when it, it drops off a lot more than what you think it does when you look at a profile and a topography of it. People are coming down the hill. They typically lose traction, spin around, and end up in that vacant lot down below the North Star Baptist Church. Sometimes they've ended up in the neighbor's yards right there on the right if you're heading into the city. So the city at one point put up guardrails to prevent people from going into those yards.
Can I ask a question about this before you move on?
Sure.
That, uh, state funds, are those committed?
Well, they're committed.
From the, so they're in the six-year plan or whatever?
Yeah, the only one that's not finalized is the King's Mill Pike, but we're pretty sure we're going to get that because they recognize it's a problem.
So that's through smart scale?
Uh, King's Mill Pike is not. The other, uh, just Lee Highway is, is smart scale. Uh, Bonham Road is, is, I think, the urban program, but they're separate programs and they all, but they are funded.
Okay.
Like that King's Mill Pike, they're working on that one. They're going to trade some money around and try to get it funded early for us.
No, I was going to say, that, that's definitely a need. We just didn't know it, it was in the, in the plan.
The, um, heart monitors and defibrillators that the Fire Department uses, uh, we're attempting to get some grant funding for that, which would offset some of that $172,000. The heart monitors and defibrillators that are now on all the fire trucks and on, uh, our ambulances are, I wouldn't say they're outdated, but they're, they're getting close and they just need to be updated at this point. The repeater, replacement radio, uh, that's with the Fire Department and with the Police Department in order for everything to work on one, one channel, if I believe is how that works. The radio system, that's roughly being paid for all by federal dollars, it's $17,000. That is, uh, from the local piece. We need new fire hose, if they, as they test those fire hoses on an annual basis, we do have, uh, quite a few that need to be replaced. That's going to cost roughly $85,000, and then the mobile data terminals is an additional $44,000 expense. Any questions?
Uh, did, you mentioned the 3% goal with capital. Did we include that in the financial policies we adopted? Was that part of that?
I think so. I, I, I would have to go back and read, but it's my recollection that we put that in there, that was going to be our goal.
And the next Budget Workshop will be March the 16th at 9:00 AM. That will be a complete discussion on the Solid Waste Disposal Fund. We will have the engineers from SCS Engineers here that day. I anticipate this going from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We may be able to get through a little bit sooner. And it's a, um, we'll.
Can we take a quick recess?
Sure.
Recession for five. Restrooms.
Fiscal year 2024 will have $1.2 million in reserves. I think it's important to note, uh, the city has not had a significant amount in capital reserves, um, that I'm aware of in the past at least four years, if not longer, and probably longer than that. So it's significant that we're building this back up so that we can do the projects that we need to do within the city to make things happen. Once again, next Budget Workshop's March 16th, 9:00 AM, Solid Waste Disposal Fund this upcoming Tuesday. It's a regular meeting. However, outside agencies will be presenting along with the School Board. You, um, are aware of what Dr. Perigin has requested and what his School Board has directed him to request, which is roughly $14.4 million in capital funding for the school. I anticipate that he will be here Tuesday night to show you exactly what that, what makes up that $14.4 million and why it's needed.
There was, there was one, one of those bigger numbers that was on there was about the jail.
Yes.
And, um, I know I'm brand new to this, but I think everyone knows that our jail is, uh, older and needs some improvement. So can we talk about that a little bit? Because I know we talked about, well, we're spending, we could spend that, but maybe in return, we would be saving some money in the future.
Right, right now, as of, well, I shouldn't say, I don't want to flip the numbers today, but as of Tuesday, we had 40 inmates at the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail. If you continue to have 40 inmates at that jail at $39 a day times 30 days, that's $46,800 a month we're spending to house someone at the regional jail. Those numbers have been lower. For some reason, right now, we've got a spike, uh, for a variety of reasons, and that's why that number spiked up a little bit. So this maintenance of $410,000 is specifically for the Annex, and that piece would be turned into more of a low-security type facility. It would be a, um, pod-type living facility, open-air bunks for individuals to live in. That would allow us to pull roughly 20 to 23 inmates out of the regional jail system back into our own jail. So if you pull half of those out, you're saving roughly $23,400 a month by having the, that number, uh, with us. And that's what we need to get to, and as long, and as we continue to work the Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program, hopefully we have more people into that program. We're anticipating more people coming into that program as the spring progresses. And if we can get 20 to 40 people in that program, that would roughly take care of those additional 20 people that it would be currently in the regional jail if we had that Annex. And then you would have everybody under our, under our roof, and we wouldn't be expending funds to the regional jail.
That hurts some discussion. Would it be, would it be, so it would be trustees in the Annex, or would it be the, the women prisoners?
That's up to the sheriff.
Okay.
So there would be some savings by not paying to send people to the regional jail, but I guess do we know yet if there would be increases with staffing at the Sheriff's Office, if they would need more, uh, more?
They would need a few other, a few other folks, uh, but that would be anticipated, but if you just look at the number, $410,000, and say you're saving $20,000 a month over the course of 18 to 20 months, you've made that difference up.
Well, I. All those department requests, there are the, all the sheets, those are all incremental above this year's budget.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I, I do a rough ad here, and I'll just, I'll just play bad cop and, you know.
You're looking at $1.5 million.
Well, everything's over 2 million.
And?
When you do, when you do the, uh, staffing ads, that's going to be, with benefits, probably close to a million. And then you got the increases, it's right at half a million, that's a million five, and then you got all the capital, so it's, that's a big number. Now, I know some of this, like, like the capital for the jail you just mentioned, there might be some offsetting savings. So one thing we're not seeing here, like, if you're, like, adding a person to save 120,000, overtime is an example, you're adding that to save, you know, you need to kind of show there, there's an offsetting savings here, so it's not really a full.
As we work through the budget process, we'll be able to show that.
But that's still a big number. Uh, that's a big increase from last year's, uh, cost basis, so, um, so that's going to, we're going to have to put some eyes and ears to it and look really close at it, because that's going to be a tough, a tough pill to swallow if we have those kinds of increases.
All these department requests, I can tell you right now, a lot of these are not going to get through the budget. I can just tell you that. These are the department requests that are outstanding right now. All because they're on this sheet in front of you today does not mean that's what you'll see in my budget on March the 26th.
I mean, if revenues hold right now, um, they're going to be up a little bit. Um, I can't remember the exact number. Do you remember what? If, you know, it, it might be 2 million by the time the year's over.
Right.
But, you know, that was, that was hopeful to say if revenues are up a couple million, we're not going to increase costs that much, so we'd have, you know, a little bit more cash to start dealing with some of the debt service, so we've got to be real careful here, you know, what we do with these, with these expense items.
And will we also be able to see a couple of the, um, well, like, agencies that will hear on Tuesday that are funded by different folks? Like, the library, uh, Discover Bristol, Believe in Bristol, the museum. Will we be able to see, like, what Bristol, Tennessee contributes, uh, in their budget a year to kind of compare?
I know those numbers. I, I can tell you right now, Bristol, Tennessee, for the, uh, Bristol, Tennessee has two libraries. They have the Downtown Library plus the one in Avoca. They put roughly a million dollars a year into their libraries. I think it's 700, they, they outperform us on the Virginia side by roughly $30,000, whatever that number is. Uh, in this past year, they funded Discover Bristol, $200,000. We just, we funded them 50,000. In previous years, they were funding $175,000, but due to the, uh, significant decrease this past year, they gave them $25,000 extra. And then in Believe in. And then in Believe in Bristol, oh, that number escapes me right now. But, I, I do know that number, but I'll have it.
They're higher than we are.
They are.
I, I know that, I mean, I can't remember exactly what it is. If memory serves me right, though, I would think when we get the packets, the application packets, we ask for the list of other funders as well as their, the budget, so you can see what they're counting on, as well as their audit, so you can see past year what, you know, it should, that information should be there. But, if it's not, I'm sure each of those agencies would be more than happy to provide it at someone's request.
And I think Ms. Bradlin provided that information, or the packets. Okay, I'm sorry. So, the packets will be coming out to you all, and you'll be able to look at that. I believe there's only three agencies that will be on Tuesday. Discover Bristol, Believe in Bristol, and, and the Birthplace of Country Music.
And the whole issue with the agencies, and from my perspective, has been, you know, people understanding exactly how they're spending the money they're getting, right? So, when they fill out the application, they get up here, they, you know, they need to tell the citizens how, you know, if we give them fifty thousand or seventy-five, or whatever the number is, what that money's going to be applied to, because that's important. You know, it's not just an open checkbook. And I know they're trying to work, like, to do things on advertising, you know, to get the hotel occupancy up, which is good. So, if they're going to, you know, spend another fifteen or twenty thousand on that, you know, say that. We're going, we're going, we're successful during December to do that. We're going to target another amount of money for that, to, to show the benefit of that. So, that helps everybody to understand where the money's going, right? That it's value-added for us. Otherwise, it's like, you don't really know where it's going, so.
So, Discover Bristol wants to go from fifty to one-seventy-five.
Correct.
And let me go back to the library.
Sure.
So, you said it was about a fifty-four thousand dollar increase request from the library?
Oh, let's see here. Fifty-three something, yeah.
Fifty-three, correct.
So, you said that once it increases, you can't ever decrease it. Why, why is that?
That's a state law.
So, you're saying, we give them this money, game over, we give them this money forever?
That's right.
Decrease every department in the city by the same-
By that same amount.
By the same percentage.
By the same percentage.
So, let's say we give them this amount.
Yeah.
And next year, we're like, we're not going to be able to make, our expenses will not meet our, our revenues will not meet our expenses, and we say we need to decrease the library by two percent. That means we've got to go two percent across the board for every department.
And the library is the only city entity that has that requirement put on it?
That's correct.
That's terrible. Why?
Talk to Delegate Quinn and Senator Carecote.
So, that's just, that's a state thing. Once you increase library funding, you can't cut it.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
Just a side note, it's not really so much about the budget, but what is it a little bit? We were talking about the King Mill Pike curve and that project, and I guess we maybe talked a little bit about it. So, it's the curve by the church, around the church there where the field is. There's a guy has a guardrail in his front yard. Does it go any further than that down King Mill Pike? Because I, I think, you know, my opinion is, all the way down King Mill Pike to the stoplight where the Dollar General is, is, part of that's kind of narrow. And there's another curve as you get, as you're going towards the Dollar General, that's, that's kind of tight as well.
That's the only area that we have a lot of accidents in.
Okay.
And, and they, they look at a ratio of, of number of accidents, and we had one of the highest in the area. And that's why the funding was kind of pretty much assured for that segment of it.
Before I got on council, I think there was a discussion about, at that stoplight on King Mill Pike, going into the neighborhood, continuing on King Mill Pike, about a sidewalk going there. Was that something that we were applying for funds for from the state to?
Yes. It, last year's funding request kind of got messed up, and so, this year, we've requested it again. We think we'll get it, but we don't know for sure yet.
That, that's to go King Mill Pike back down towards Kingtown, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Not to go the way towards where this would be?
Basically, it would go from the Dollar General down to, is that Hillside?
Hillside, yeah, yeah. Because I think it goes up that hillside, up that way towards the housing project up there. And to connect that back down to that shopping center, since, especially since there's no store down there. For years, there had been, and now there's nothing.
What would they be doing at the, at the King Mill Pike curve? Would they be just regrading it, or would they be straightening it out, or?
We're going to try to, to make it not quite so sharp and take some of the, the slope as you come down the hill, take some of the, it's kind of a bump in it. We're going to try to lower that so that it's a little smoother as people drive through there. Typically, the cars don't spin out or have a problem if, if they go the speed limit, but generally, people just don't do that.
So, what do you think the revenue line would be more solidified on, what the number really will be?
Well, that process, that'll be continually worked on through March and April. As I said, there's a hundred and forty-seven revenue line items, and it's just hard to solidify all that because you have so much funding coming from other, from the state and federal that we just don't know yet. And we will have a good, a good handle on it by March twenty-sixth. And we continue to look at those revenue items up until we pass that budget. And if we see something's not going to come in, we adjust the budget as appropriate.
Any other questions?
I was just sitting here looking at this timeline. I mean, one thing, you had the sheet in front of us about the insurance rates. At what point, it seems to me like last year, we had to do that by?
April first.
Yeah, because there was some concern about, a little bit of confusion, I think, about when that got done. And so, I don't know, you know, where that is in here, as well as, you know, what you're showing us is just increase over last year, but as, as the mayor pointed out, kind of seeing the, the detail and, and the offsetting revenues and kind of getting a better picture of that. And I think we have one more workshop after the public hearing, but I don't know that between when you present it, there's, and between that and the public hearing, there's any chance for us to really sit down and look at this as a group. I mean, I know we can do that in, in other ways.
And we're going to, as, just like we did it last year, we're going to kind of meet with two-on-twos. And then, as we go through that process, we'll figure out what dates, because I know last year, we were putting up dates on the whiteboard up in the conference room, trying to figure out what would be the best for everybody to work, work out. And we know there's going to be other workshops. We just know these are the ones that-
That's fine.
-we have to get through right now. In regards to the offsets, anything that I said is a revenue item, there's an equal offset to it. So, DMV stop fees, there's not an equal offset to that. This, let's see, the work release fees, there's an offset to that as well. That may be the only two that, well, I take that back. Hotel Bristol, Euclid would have an offset. And I think that's it.
I think what would help me, if you had at least one slide that showed the total summary, and we just keep it up to date and shift it as we keep showing details. So, like, if you're projecting revenues to end the year at fifty-six million, just, you know, that's what we're projecting as, as of today, that's what we show. And then you show expenses last year were X, and then all this incremental adds, so it makes the new expense predictions at this point this. So, you can kind of see how in-line or out-of-line we are as every work session goes, right?
Okay.
Hopefully, that summary sheet, the things that are really out of whack would pop off the page at you, right?
Oh, last thing. I anticipate holding the Solid Waste Disposal Fund up in the conference room. I, I think it'll be beneficial for us, we'll have whiteboards available. I don't anticipate too many people showing up for that. So, we would, next Saturday, we'll be in the conference room upstairs for the Solid Waste of Social Fund meeting.
Is, is that something, and I know when we talked about getting citizen involvement that have a portion of that, so that, because that seems to be an issue, that, that we wanted citizen involvement, and, and I think people are probably interested in that particular issue.
If citizens want to show up and speak and talk about it, they're more than welcome to.
And since we're doing, if we were doing that one in the conference room, do we have the capability to be able to livestream that as well? I feel like that would, I mean, really and truly be something that a lot of people would like to see and, you know, be able to have access to see, even if they can't make it to the meetings, because, you know, you see, we got three people here, and they're, they're all duty-bound to be here.
And why do we have to have it up there versus down here?
I just feel like it'd be a little more beneficial to us because we're always going to be talking about a lot of numbers. There'll probably be some calculations going on. We can use the whiteboards and draw things out so that people can see what's, what's going on with those numbers.
Even if it won't be livestreamed, will it still be recorded?
We can get it recorded.
So, well, I mean.
I mean, I remember a couple of years ago, before I was on council, I was, I was coming to some of the budget workshops, you know, and I'd just kind of sneak in and watch. And I remember that you all had tables right here in the middle. I mean, we could do that, or just, you know, roll, do we have any whiteboards that roll, roll something in? So, it could livestream?
I think the issue with the tables here, when you livestream, you're not going to be able to see what's going on, plus you don't have the microphones.
At least we can record it up there.
Right.
But, couldn't we have the people sit in what I call the bullpens over there, like where Mr. McCullough is? I mean, is that not on camera?
That would be on camera, but if you had, like, Mr. Osborne was talking, I believe he had tables kind of here in the centerpiece. You don't necessarily have the audio equipment that picks up the audio. And I know that camera's picking up me from this angle right now. That one's picking up Wallace, and then we have this one going towards you all. But, I, I mean, we can put it wherever y'all'd like. I just thought it might be best to have it in the conference room.
As long as it can be, you know, at least filmed, so it's on the record, so people can go back and refer to it later. I mean, because it's a, I would argue the biggest issue that we've got, I mean, as far as, you know, a drain on us is the Solid Waste Disposal Fund.
So, I, do you don't have one of those that's got the little stylus?
We're broke.
And you can draw, they make phones now to do that.
We can put it in the budget.
Me, Jen can't do that up there, work his magic.
All right, I don't have anything else.
All right, that's it, we're adjourned.